Ladies and gentlemen, it is six o'clock. We will call our meeting to a we appreciate everybody being here tonight. We are the Graham City Council. And rest assured, everyone here tonight will have opportunity to speak on anything you want to speak on. Would you bow your heads with me, please? Heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day and all the blessings you've given us. Thank you for the rain that's filled up our city like this was desperately needed. Thank you for these people that are willing to work on behalf of the city, the city staff, all the people that are involved in making the city run as a great group. Please be with the family of Floyd Bailiff as they grieve the loss. We were all with them. He was a city employee, the city of Graham, and we appreciate it. And all these things we asked in your name, amen. Ladies and gentlemen, would you please rise for our pledge of allegiance? Ladies and gentlemen, first thing on our list tonight is consent agenda. A is approval of minutes December the second. Second one is B approval of minutes December the third, approval of minutes December the twelfth, approve the tax releases. E is approve agreement for emergency dispatch and communication services with the city of Burlington. F is approve amendments to the code of ordinances officials page. G is approve acceptance of the public streets and R O Ws for the challenge subdivision. H is approve Graham Public Library lease agreement with Almond County. And I is approve Farm Bureau's request to close the streets of 100 block up East Elm Street. Does anybody want to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I make a move to release E from the consent agenda.
Release? Anybody else? If not, then I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move.
Second.
I need all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose likewise. Then we'll go back to E approve agreement for emergency dispatch and communication services with the city of Burlington. And I'll go to Ricky Howell for his problems with this.
Mr. Mayor, I believe this is this move will be a disservice to our city and its city residents. I don't feel like this is in the best interest of our city to make this move.
Okay, with that, we'll let's go to the staff report. That'd be all right with you? Okay, staff report, Frankie.
All your attention to the staff report prepared collectively by a couple of department heads and reviewed by administration. City of Graham and City of Burlington are seeking approval of the subject interlocal agreement to establish unified emergency dispatch and communication system within the Burlington Emergency Communications Center whereby each will benefit from improved interoperability and emergency response. Additionally, Graham will have added benefits of 800 megahertz station alerting, mobile computer terminals for police cars and fire trucks, automated vehicle location dispatch and improved reception using the Tron radio network, which the city of Burlington Emergency Communications Center uses as their radio network. Graham and Burlington also utilize similar fire records management and police records management systems, but the data is currently segregated. City of Graham and City of Burlington have several existing agreements for operations in a long standing history of cooperation. Some current agreements include police utilities, traffic signalization, animal service, information technology, and G I S.
All right, questions for staff? Ricky, we'll start with you, please. Chip, questions for the staff?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
What is the the cost of switching to Burlington?
That's a good question. I was hoping we would avoid the question of funding and focus on the question of safety and level of service. But I've had a couple of folks approach me today in questioning, and it's a huge price tag. Well, I think there's a misunderstanding. So when you're crafting a budget, our government budget is commingled. It's more than just in and out for a particular item. Some things there are, but generally that's for your enterprise funds. So when we were in the budget process, our police and fire departments who have worked on this issue for several years, you know, approached me and, you know, requested funding to move forward with the agreement with another agency. I said, well, how are we going to pay for it? So as the person that crafts the budget, I have to look at the net effect to our overall commingled budget and our revenues. So what I didn't get into in the staff report or our department guys didn't get into is you have to take a look at some of the other agreements we have. Some, there's no change, such as the library agreement we have with the county tonight. Some, there's an increase in cost as we go forward. Some, there's a decrease in cost. So when I look at the net effect, the there's a graduated increase in the current service provider's fee. And there's a decrease in some other contracts we have. So when you combine those things, the real difference in cost to the city is about $45,500. That's the added recurring cost for the operational cost of going to this this level of service. So, you know, I also have to ask myself, well, that's still more. How do you approach this without asking the taxpayer for an additional fee or additional tax? Some cities can depend on growth. Our growth is there, but it's not necessarily enough for the expanded service or levels of service. So I went back and looked at some of the efforts that we've made in the past, and one of those major efforts in the line of safety, and safety is one of the primary reasons we're attempting this, is we've made great efforts in safety. And that not only gets our employees here and keeps them safe and establishes a full workforce, but also helps the bottom line. So over the last five years, we have reduced our workers' compensation cost, cost to the taxpayer by $98,688 per year. So that's how you fund added service without going to the taxpayer and asking them for more.
I think we understand that. I think you're the total cost for going to the system with subtract all the ideas of we're we're saving money somewhere else. Let's look at the total cost for this system.
We if you compile the difference in the graduated cost and the declining cost of other contracts, that net difference is 45,000. You couple that with savings we're receiving on things such as workers' comp, similar safety related things. We actually have a little extra money, which is going to the departments to carry out current missions.
I hate to give him chips.
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
The declining cost, what are where are the declining costs? Are they on CCOM? Are they on Burlington side?
Our current provider for communications, the cost is there's a graduated cost increase over the next couple of years.
Right.
We also have a simultaneous agreement with the city of Burlington where our costs are declining. So you net those things out because remember we have a commingled budget. And all departments draw from those commingling of revenues. So that's how you arrive at how you pay for these things. This this item was first discussed from a budgetary standpoint about a year ago during our budget retreat. And then during the approval of the budget for the current fiscal year, funds were appropriated for for this contract.
Can I ask Chip's permission to ask?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
The forty-five five, how long does it take us to get to there?
I'm sorry?
The 45,500, how long does it take us to get there? Is it three years, one year?
That that's when you take the net effect of two particular contracts. That's when both contracts have graduated and declined. That's your net difference using today's dollars.
Okay, what what year would that be?
Twenty twenty-one.
You got the call.
I'm through, thank you.
Jennifer, questions, please?
What contracts are those?
That's the current communications agreement and animal services agreement.
Animal services agreement. Is that for tell me how that agreement relates to the nine one one center?
That's I was trying to give you some insight as to how you fund additional levels of service. So if you look at one contract going up and one contract going down, there's some balance there, the the net effect. And then you take what contract would the cost that you're going to incur with your with your move versus the cost that it's going to be.
That's around eighty-five thousand, right?
Right. And then when you net that out, that comes to forty-five thousand, five hundred dollars.
So that's just the cost of moving, not the additional cost of being with Burlington. So.
Using today's dollars.
It was two hundred and what to?
Fifty-three, that's two fifty-three.
Two fifty-three, and currently we're paying how much?
Currently paying one thirty.
One thirty.
But that's going to go up.
Well, the Viper system's free. How is that going to go up?
Because our current provider has stipulated the fees are going to increase over the next three years.
Has the state of North Carolina stated that the Viper system is gonna have user fees?
That's not the state. That's utilizing our current provider. Their their fee for handling our service.
So from one hundred and thirty thousand to two fifty-three plus eighty-five thousand dollars for install. Is that correct?
There's seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred estimated for install.
Seventy-seven.
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred.
And if we're able to use asset forfeiture funds to do that, I'll be the first one to use it. I'd love to let a drug dealer pay for it.
Okay, so the Viper system that you currently have right now, you'd be looking at going from Viper to Tron. Is that correct?
Yes, we're we're going to if it's technical, I'm not the best one to answer the technical questions. Just be quite honest with you.
Do you what you've heard from your police chief and fire chief, I know that they're stated. Their stated guarantee, I guess, is ninety-five percent in-street coverage. Can you talk a little bit about that?
When we get to.
About the Viper network? Viper network? I can only tell you what I've been told in as my understanding, Viper network was pursuant to nine eleven. And it was the hopes of it was to was for voice interoperability in the street. Some of the things that we would desire is better coverage in buildings. Be responses within buildings, but I would defer to those that know the technical aspects much better than I do.
Melody, questions, please?
Yes, sir. My questions are for the fire chief and the police representative. If they could come forward, please.
We'll ask him after we finish with the staff.
Then my questions are going to be for those individuals, and I want to know the difference in the level of service, please. If you'll please address those. Boots on the ground, how that works every day and what why we're looking at this and what difference it will make.
Chiefs, it's nice to have you all here. We appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
So let me refer to Chip for his first question, and we'll go there, and we'll get your question as soon as we get back to you, okay? You ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Why do you suggest that we moved our system to Burlington?
Over two years ago, we decided or determined that the Viper system wasn't giving us the proper coverage that we needed. We had several dead spots throughout the city. I say dead spots means where communication couldn't get get back and forth between our dispatch center, CCOM. We had tests done by the Viper states folks and as well as Motorola, the provider of the system. The hardware manufacturers come to town and they verify we had numerous dead spots. We tried the same spots through the Guilford Metro system, which is Tron, which is Burlington's own. And the coverage was by far superior compared to what we were getting with Viper. For me, it's always been and will continue to be a safety issue for my cops on the street. We all know that when with emergency situations, we need to have clear communication with those folks that are out there in harm's way. So that's always that's been my push all along. I believe the Tron system is the answer.
Do I add to that, Chief, though?
Sure, I'll echo Chief Pritchard's comments. Again, as we stated, Viper is ninety-five percent in-street coverage. That's the best they say their system will work. We don't fight fires in the street. We're in the buildings. And we don't have time when we pack up, put an air pack on, put turnout gear on, and we send our folks in to identify that we can no longer respond to them, to tell them to switch over to another channel, because obviously if we can't communicate with them, we can't tell them to get off of the system. At that point, they just don't think we're calling them, and they think that they have communications with us. So when they call a mayday, they call for a resource, they no longer get us. We think they're working inside. We don't know. This move to the Tron system, again, I lived in that world for eighteen years in Guilford County. I know the system. I believe in it. I know how they manage that system, and it is far superior to the Viper system. And we know the Viper system is twenty years old. And it's up to state and state funding to maintain that system, and we know the experiences we have with that. So again, echo his his comments. It's all about the safety of our folks. I can't lay my head on my pillow at night thinking that I'm sending somebody in a building and I cannot communicate with them any longer. That scares me, and it should scare every one of you.
It was imperative we do this for the safety.
Yes, sir.
Law enforcement officers and our fire our fire department.
Absolutely, yes, every day.
And that's your give you guys recommendation that we might.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Jennifer, questions, please?
Um. You know, obviously, I'm not a police officer or fire fireman, but I take the the safety issue very, very serious. There's not any amount of money that's worth, you know, obviously losing somebody, especially somebody that volunteers to take a job like that. So money doesn't seem to be an issue to me. I think that it was learning about it in the paper was probably not my, you know, favorite thing. But so I had a county commissioner reach out to me and ask if we could could meet, but you guys met earlier this week and you still it's your opinion that so we did reach out to the county to try to salvage, you know, the contract that we currently have to see if anything could be done with the Viper system and move forward so there wouldn't be this transfer from nine one one to the Burlington system. But that didn't result result in any any anything that you would change your mind, I guess, moving forward. There's there's not like a like if we postpone this for one month, you don't feel that in a month from now, things would get any better. like if we postpone this for one month, you don't feel that in a month from now, things would get any better, or that there's any real reason to continue the relationship with the county with nine one one communications. Is that correct?
That's correct. I don't think postponing this would improve it at all. It would just make it longer coming to something we need to do already.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, uh, again, the county can throw money at this issue. And, uh, fortunately, I've, I've been a nine one one director for a couple of years in, in another county. It takes time.
And that knowledge is very much.
So it takes, it takes time. So if we said today, if the county said today, we want to throw money at this and we want to fix the technical issues for months away from that actually occurring, because it takes time. My, my question is, why did they allow their system to get like it is? Why haven't they spent the money prior to maintain a system that we could be satisfied with in the street? So, uh, it doesn't change my mind. Our meeting yesterday, I appreciated the opportunity to sit down face to face with them, but it, when, when we discussed it afterwards, uh, our decision was to move forward.
And, um, just a couple more questions. Um, everybody's talked about dead spots, but you know, when you talk to one person, they tell you there's all these dead spots, then you talk to somebody from communications and they say, we've done all this testing, there's no dead spot. So if you, if you look at it, I asked for a coverage map just so that I would get an impartial, an unbiased um, thing, but I, I wasn't given that. So, um, how many dead spots would you say that, that the Viper system has versus the Tron system when you've tested them side by side?
I don't know that I can give you a quantifiable number exactly. I know that it was a bit, it was, uh, far superior with Tron having fewer dead spots, um, you know, especially along Ivy Road, which is a big, you know, pretty congested area for us, along the river basin, anywhere along that area, out of ACC, which is a big concern for us. We have a, you know, clear communications with the Alamo County College. Just, you know, Bank Street, Moore Street, the dead ends of those things, and just various others that I'm aware of. I can't give you a number, so to speak, but I know that it was far superior. And we worked closely with CCOM. We made CCOM aware, and they've actually were very amicable to our request, and we made the logs of our, of each time we had a dead spot, and CCOM would, would record that, and we'd go out afterwards and actually, the director at the time, Dexter Brier, went out himself with the radio and a technician, and they checked these things, and they found it to be true. We had the same people, the guy from Tron, which Guilford Metro came and tested the areas, and it was much, much better.
So, so, um, I know that, like, it just seems like a lot of, you know, I got, I'm getting information here and information here, and you don't know, like, which one to believe, but um, the coverage map that you have, do you have a coverage map from Tron versus coverage map with Viper?
I don't, we don't currently have a map, but I'm sure there's one that can be available. You know, Tron is proven to be pretty reliable.
You've seen that you're, I mean, I, obviously, I trust, you know, what you say, um, chief, so if you've seen that, it's kind of like looking at a Verizon and an AT&T map. You have a lot more coverage.
Very similar.
Uh, that's, that's my thing, because one of the things they kept saying is, well, if you have dead spots with Viper, you're just gonna have those same dead spots with Tron, but you're saying that you've tested that, and that's not correct.
I'm gonna say there's probably no system that's perfect like Verizon. There's still spots that you can't get Verizon, if you can believe that, with all the towers. But by far, Tron is much more reliable, I would say, than the Viper system is or could be for us. The actual recommendation from the Viper State folks was that we build a tower in town, a Viper tower, for the tune of then, about a five hundred fifty, six hundred thousand now is much more, I'm sure, and give them complete control of it. The Burlington Tower for Tron is real close to the, is close to the east side of town in that, the west side of town, and we can get the communications a lot clearer because we're closer to a tower, just like a cell phone.
Are there any negatives going from the system that we currently have to the new system? I've, I've heard the positives, and, um, and I absolutely assume that you guys, um, you know, we're certainly much more well-versed in this, but what are, what are any negatives that could possibly happen?
I personally can't think of any other than it is an increased cost, but also we get, uh, the ability, like manager said about sharing records and things, and also having GPS locational vehicles and dispatching cars to the closest car versus the one that's in the zone. That makes our response time much quicker, and maybe Chief Cole could add to that, I don't know.
Same situation for us. Uh, our relationship with Burlington, we, I think we share about four miles of boundary with the city of Burlington, so uh, their operations are very similar to ours. Obviously, we're two municipalities working for the same type of cause, uh, to serve our citizens. I, I think the one thing that we, uh, we gain, some may see it as a negative, we, we will pay user fees to be on the Guilford system, but there are benefits that will come with that, and those things are already budgeted. The benefit that will come with it is, is that Guilford manages their, the health of their system. Every time we push to talk a radio and it hits the Guilford system, they will identify if that radio, if it has good strength, if it's in good condition, if there's a problem with it. They also look at their towers the same way. So the added benefit to know the health of the radio system that we're on is a plus, even though you may pay a, a, a user fee per radio and that sort of thing, uh, through Guilford Metro. Currently with the state, you notify them, there's an issue, they want to know how many times it's happening, and then they respond. Guilford responds on the front side. They actually let you know, they'll call you and say, hey, your, your radio's showing a problem. You need to bring it in to get it checked. You, that, that's, you, there's no cost, uh, you know, that's too great to have that type of reliability in the system that we use every day.
Um, I'm sorry, this is an important issue to me. If, one of the things that he brought up to me was, what are you gonna do if you have an officer involved in a chase and they go outside of the county, that, that phone service drops at exit one fifty-four? So I know under the Viper system, he was saying that you still have coverage in all the counties surrounding that area. Um, do you have workarounds for that? Do you feel comfortable that you will not, you know, how will you be able to communicate with that officer if he goes past the one fifty-four exit?
Well, for us, a pursuit is gonna have to be approved by the supervisor. It's gonna be a rare occasion where we do pursue for something like that. However, if that was to happen, we do, we do continue to have our Viper IDs, so we're able to switch over to the Viper system when we get out of clearance for Tron system, for example. Like we used to with VHF, when everybody had their own channel, we had ways to switch around and talk to the jurisdiction for which we're entering.
So you'll be able to still talk to that officer if they get past that area on the Tron system?
Well, the Tron system, like the Viper system, has its limitations. If they go past the Tron coverage area, then we can switch back to the Viper system. We still maintain the, the ability to get on the Viper system, if I'm correct.
That is correct.
Oh, okay. Well, see, I didn't know about that. That, that's actually very important information.
For dispatch purposes, we think Tron is a better, more reliable, more coverage for us.
Okay, and.
But we will remain a Viper user if we need to be.
Um, I heard a, a, a lot of information, but basically, these, these two things, um, concerned me, um, the most was the, the chasing, you know, if you get somewhere, like, because the whole point of this is to have better coverage. So I was like, okay, that, that would be a problem, and then transferring the calls. Um, all the calls will still go through Alamo County nine one one, and they will still have to transfer that call to Burlington. In a scenario like somebody says Border Street, you don't know if it's Burlington, Graham, whatever, how will they, um, you know, if the streets are similar, I mean, do you have issues like that? Do you anticipate those kind of things? Do you, do you worry about the transfer of the calls from the existing nine one one as this extra step to Burlington? Or have you, like, anticipated that and, and feel like that won't be a problem?
You want to get that, Mr. Director? Yeah, so a call transfer, when, when a call is received at Alamo County CCOM, they field all calls. They're the primary piece at Public Safety Answering Point. So all nine one one calls in the county go directly to CCOM. They identify the address. Once, once they geocode the address in CAD, it tells them what jurisdiction that address belongs in. And they say, do you need police, fire, or EMS if it's a police or fire issue? In this case, if we, we make this move, uh, police or fire, they say, let me transfer you to Burlington. They will transfer the call. The protocol is, is that they stay on the phone until the call is completely transferred, and there's voice contact with the telecommunicator at Burlington. If the call was to drop in process, they have two options. They can pass that information along to Burlington, because both telecommunications will be on the phone line together. Or their protocol is that they reach out and call that person back. Most of the time, when a call is dropped, it's because of connectivity with a cell phone. That's gonna occur whether it stays at CCOM or whether it's transferred. The transfer is not the reason for the drop in connection. It's just a connection issue because somebody may be calling from the father's reaches of the county needing service. Hopefully, with us being centrally located in the county, that we don't have as many issues with cell phone calls being dropped because we have better connectivity. So I, I don't see that being a, a real issue, no more than what they experience on a daily basis at the communication center. But they have protocols in place where they make that phone call back, or they'll send a response, a police response most of the time. If they have a hang-up, drop call, hang-up, and they can't get the person back, they're gonna send the police to investigate. Happens every day now with cell phones, more times than you can probably count. So, uh, we don't see that as being a problem.
Not a delay or anything, because that's a lifeline for some people, obviously.
So, uh, another, uh, uh, another function in the CAD system, because the commu- county communication center and the Burlington Communication Center uses the same CAD system. There's a function called C to C, communication to communication center. So actually, Alamo could process the call and drop that call to the Burlington CAD system to dispatch a police officer. So if there was an issue and a breakdown uh, with phone lines, is that that call could still be processed soon as it, the address geocodes. It sends it straight to Burlington, drops in their CAD system. We're talking seconds, I mean, probably milliseconds if we really get down to it. So, uh, great stride. Twenty years ago, I would say, yeah, it's an issue. Today, not an issue.
Great, that's wonderful. Thank you. You've made me feel a lot better about, this is really important, and we need to make sure we get it right. We don't want residents calling saying, I called nine one one and I got put on hold, or.
That is not acceptable.
I can anticipate, that would be a bad situation, so, uh, yeah, so we just want to make sure it's gonna be seamless and that the end user is gonna be able to get the help they need in a very timely fashion.
Much, much, it's much of a concern for us as well.
I have one question for Frankie. The cost, I know that you had said in a meeting earlier that, that regionally, people are going to this regional system that a lot of different cities are, are tagging on to this system regionally. Is there an anticipation as Guilford County Metro gets Burlington, and obviously has Guilford and all these other cities, that the cost will go down rather than continue to go up, or is it just that's gonna be a reflection of the technology?
My crystal ball is very fuzzy when it comes to that. I, I don't know if it would be a cost savings. I'm not sure how they do it in the metro areas that currently have this. Some, it would depend on their county taxing structure. I would imagine, imagine there would still be fees involved from the various jurisdictions. But it is something that we're seeing emerge, these regional communication centers, particularly in the more metropolitan areas, the denser populated areas.
And so someone here could be patched through theoretically to other places outside of this area when they're on the regional system versus us just having an Alamo County system?
That's my understanding.
They are building systems now, so if there's a catastrophic event in Alamo County, calls could seamlessly be rerouted to Guilford County, and nobody would ever know the difference until they heard Guilford County nine one one, Guilford Metro nine one one when they answered the phone. And that call could be processed. It could be sent to any CAD system in, in that system, in that regional area, uh, radio system, same way. Uh, that, that's the goal of the state nine one one board, is to make the state seamless. So when, when we have catastrophic events, hurricanes, tornadoes, whatever that may be, we can move callers from one place to another seamlessly without anybody, it's a flip of the switch, basically.
And you'll still be able to hear Alamo County EMS and all of these other things that are currently in on the system now. You'll still be able to hear that when we do the switch over.
Yeah, our radios, our radios are gold band radios. They have capabilities of talking on Guilford system and Viper, so it's just a matter of switching the, the button and, and talking to whoever we need to.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Melody, questions please?
Yeah, I think you've quite covered it. Um, I do want to say, though, thank you very much to both of you in your departments for all that you do for us. What you do every day and put your lives on the line is extremely important to us, and that's way more important than the dollar value. Please rest assured. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melody. Ricky, questions please? Jim, I'd like to speak to Officer Flood, please. LT, it's good to have you here. Would you tell me about the shooting call you worked last?
Okay, as far as the radio issues we had.
Please.
So yes, the, uh, shooting that we had, and are y'all familiar with it, that we had last week? Um, I was the second officer on scene, actually responded off duty, and I went down there to assist officers. But ended up being the second officer on scene, and I was there, um, when we talk about the dead spots. I was there in front of the pines, standing there with the victim. The victim had a gunshot wound to the head. Um, being that I was in plain clothes, we had one uniform officer there already. I had him keeping the crowd back, and I started tending to trying to save this young man's life. Um, so I'm there with the gentleman that's been shot. I need to relay information to CCOM to make sure we're getting the proper medical response that we need. Um, as I'm standing there with the individual, I grabbed my radio, and as soon as I key up, I bonk. What we refer to as bonking is only one of two things happens there, is either somebody else is transmitting at the same time, which would happen on any radio. Two people can't talk on the, on the same channel at one time. Or you do not have a signal. I grabbed my radio and I bonked. If somebody's talking on it when I release, I'm gonna hear them talking. I know what somebody's talking. I release, it's nothing. I hit the button again, I'm bonked. I had to walk away from the individual, probably about twenty feet out into the parking lot, hold my radio up in the air, tilt my head up and holler into the radio so that I could get a signal, and then go back to tending to that individual. Um, and that's, that's the problems we have on the Viper system right now, because some of these spots, we don't get coverage. And in a situation like that, and especially when, you know, we got a gunshot victim, we're trying to apply pressure. I don't need to have to stop bringing in first aid so that I can go communicate on the radio, um, to come back to them, and that's on a walkie. And would you have to remember where this Viper system is on a walkie? It don't push as hard with signal strength as a car does. So, you know, it's not always feasible for us to be able to run back to that car to get a radiator that's gonna push a bigger signal to hit this network as it is to hit on a walkie. And that's what we're looking for there, is that coverage if we can get off that walkie.
Questions for Dwayne, uh, Chip?
I heard there's a difference inside and outside. Now, this happened outside, correct?
I was outside. I was out in the parking lot of the pines apartment.
Thank you, sir.
And when you look at that, if you look at the pines apartments and our call volume and everything, that's has become one of our higher, higher call volume areas and somewhere that officers are down at all the time.
Thank you.
Questions for Lieutenant Flood, Jen- Jennifer?
No.
Melody?
So is it true to say, gentlemen, all three of you, that this is not only a safety issue for you and our officers out there on the street, but this is also for the general public, because if we cannot get through, we cannot get you help. Correct?
That's absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Question. Thank you, sir. I'd like to talk to Lieutenant Cook, please. Jason, would you come up, please?
Ms. Mayor, you good with us?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank y'all. Jason, thank you for being here. How long have you been in the fire department, please, sir?
Uh, I've been in the fire department twen- almost twenty-four years.
How good is the coverage inside ACC, the last fire you worked?
Um, been a while, but, uh, as Lieutenant Flood said, we get bonked a lot. I am various areas of the city, ACC being, being one of them.
How close have you ever been bonked?
How close?
Uh, did you work the fire over here off of Auto Park Drive and that metal building over there?
Yeah.
Did you have coverage inside that building?
Uh, I believe I got bonked.
Okay, questions for Lieutenant, what, I mean Lieutenant Cook, I'm sorry.
No question.
Yeah, hmm, my fault.
He just got demoted.
No question?
No question, Jennifer, please.
Thanks, Jason.
Melody, any questions for Jason? Ricky?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Yes, sir. Anybody from the floor want to speak on this? Come up, sir. Name and address, Wood, please.
Sure. Tom Boni, publisher of the Alamo News, one fourteen West Elm Street, home address twelve forty Jimson Court in Graham, out in county. Uh, Ms. Mayor, my first question, um, really involves the procedure of this item on the agenda. I don't understand how Graham City Council is dealing with this issue tonight, and it's already been presented to the Burlington City Council and approved a week ago. How is Burlington approving something that Graham has not yet asked for?
We could not approve it before we went to Burlington. They had to approve our, us going into their system. The procedure is right. They had to approve it first, and then we asked.
Seems awfully odd.
How odd do you think it is? Why would it be odd?
Because y'all haven't decided to do that yet. There's at least some debate.
If we said no, then Burlington was just wasted, uh, they, it was on their consent agenda. They would have wasted five minutes of a, whoever prepared this consent agenda's time.
And I, I guess, sort of related to the procedure, is if this is such a serious issue, as it's been. And I, I guess sort of related to the procedure is if this is such a serious issue as it's been described and has been, I think the police chief said two years. Correct me if I've missed it, I haven't heard y'all discussing this at any meeting, anytime during that time period.
This has gone on for 20 years. We've been having problems with this system for 20 years and it's been discussed between the fire department, the police department and CCOM, not the city council. We don't get into the day-to-day business of the, the fire department. That's not our duty. But we've known this system was, had problems.
Well, and I guess that's part of my question and that certainly came up at the county commissioner meeting last week. Does the city feel that you've exhausted your efforts to persuade the county to make any kind of improvements that would make their system sufficient or equal or as good?
Let me call up Billy Clayton, would you please? Mr. Clayton, please. Billy works for this Graham Police Department. He'll answer your questions. Billy, where are you from?
Live right here in Alamance County, sir.
Yes, sir. What did you do before you came Graham Police?
I was deputy commander with State Highway Patrol.
Thank you, sir. Do you think the county can fix this system within a three-year period?
No, sir.
Four years?
Nah, maybe. I think it's a multifaceted approach, not just equipment. I think you've got training that goes along with that equipment. So once you get the equipment, like I think Chiefs, both the Chiefs spoke to, once you get the equipment in place, um, and you could have state-of-the-art equipment, people start to be trained, get used to it and get it up and working, be tested. So it's a long process.
You experienced with the Viper?
I am, yes, sir.
And you experienced with the highway patrol with the Viper system?
Yes.
You have a question for Mr. Clayton?
I guess you were asking, was Viper good for the highway patrol?
No, he worked through the Viper system when he came here 20 years ago. He was in the highway patrol at that time. And it was the cutting edge at that time, but in this county has not moved a step in 20 years.
And highway patrol does or doesn't use Viper?
They do.
But remember, they're, they're street born, they're not inside the buildings.
Is that the main issue is inside? I thought I heard other discussion that also says it's a street problem.
It is. Officer Flood said that he could not get, he was in the street. So if he was in the street and can't get it, surely he couldn't get it inside the building. Did that answer your question, I hope?
Yes.
Thank you, Billy.
I guess so, though, following up on that, Mayor, is there anybody else in the county, other municipalities that are already in the Guilford slash Burlington system?
City of Burlington?
Just Burlington. But none of the other municipalities, Graham size or smaller? Okay. Do I understand, one part that's not quite clear in the contract or proposed contract is whether there is designated staff? Is there designated staff?
There was supposed to be.
For Graham in the Burlington system?
There was supposed to be one at CCOM, there is not. We were supposed to have a dedicated person that answers Burlington Fire and Burlington Police calls to, and that's it. And what happens when they're down a person, then they move another city into that or the county EMS or county fire. And they end up working Graham Police, Graham Fire, county fire and maybe Mibbin or whoever.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Mayor, my question is, in the new proposal with Burlington, is there to be a Graham specific?
I personally can't answer that, but Chief, have you got an answer, both of them or not? And yes?
All right. And then I guess just to try to come back to the apples to apples, even of the cost, if I'm understanding the actual annual cost currently, not future, not averaging and going up and down, it's more or less 130 now to the county. And it's 2v1, 253 with the city of Burlington slash Guilford. And then you mentioned a 77, 800 for, you called it installation. Is installation the fiber optic lines to be laid primarily or at least?
There, we will have to do some communications upgrades. We're prepared to do that. I think the majority of the cost is a console. Be housed in the communication center.
All right, but, but as I understood it, there's to be a line run between Graham to Burlington?
We're already interconnected. I'll leave it, I won't go any further than that for security purposes, but we have interconnections existing. We are going to enhance those.
All right. And then do I understand correctly that the timeframe though, for this is six months out? Okay. Sorry, thank you.
Anyone else want to speak on this? Come up, Jason, if you will. This is Captain Cook. My fault, Jason. Yes, sir. Let me have your name and address, if you would.
Jason Cook, 1895 Challenge Drive, Graham. One thing that hasn't been discussed, we're talking about routine calls, lots of times we get bonked constantly. When there is a situation like a storm or major things going on in town, we, we can barely get through sometimes. The last time we had major storm, I was in charge up here and I was having to call CCOM on my cell phone to get through. Things were so busy. Lot of calls, police were busy, fire was busy, public works was busy. Everybody's calling and literally couldn't get through. So I just want to make sure that in extreme situations, it's a problem. Thank y'all.
Anyone, anyone else? With that, we'll close this discussion, we'll discuss it among ourselves. What does everybody think?
Well, we had several officers and our fire chiefs say this is imperative that we do and we got to trust those guys and protect our, our officers and our fire.
Anyone else want to add on to this? Ricky, you had, had the problem with it, have you got a, do you want to add anything to it?
Still against this.
There some sort of reason that you want to share with us?
I still feel like that it's not in the best interest for him.
Okay. Anybody else want to add to this? With that, I'll move you to page 19 on your agenda and ask for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to make the motion to approve the agreement for emergency dispatch and communication services with the city of Burlington.
I'd be excited to, to second that. So we've got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed likewise.
Aye.
Motion carried four to one. Thank you, everybody. We appreciate y'all being here tonight. So next we will go to number two, our boards and commission appointments. And what we're going to do is go through these, the Appearance Commission, Historical Museum Advisory Board, Historic Resources Commission, Local Firefighters Relief Fund, Recreation Commission and the Tree Board first. And we've got people that want to be on these boards. These are volunteer boards that help us determine what the city is going to look like and what they do. So first one is the Appearance Commission, we have two vacancies. We've got one, two, three, four, five, six people interested in these two vacancies. Cheryl Ray, Ronald Whittington, Stephen Ruiz, Ruiz?
Stephanie Ruiz.
Oh, I'm sorry, Stephanie Ruiz, is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. And John Byrd and Sarah Barham. So is anyone here that wants to speak? Anybody here, one of these here? If not, I'll go to the council, does the council have a, someone they want to nominate?
Mr. Mayor, I do, I'd like to recommend John Byrd for one of the seats.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to recommend Cheryl Ray.
Okay, Jennifer?
Ronald Whittington, please.
One else? Okay, we've got three, Cheryl Ray, John Byrd and Ronald Whittington. Do this by paper or do you want to raise a hand?
Well, I think they're all qualified. The reason why, I'm like, I know Cheryl and like her very well. It's just, I want to see more on that appearance board with some flowers and some things downtown and this person has landscaping experience and, you know, that's why I was interested in having him on, serve on the board. I think, I think, you know, if everybody considered equal, who, who put their applications in first? If everybody's considered equal?
We're going to vote on them, so.
This was all the way back in October, they put their application in and.
I doubt that has a whole lot to do with it, is who we're going to vote for. I'm going to give Ricky and Melody a chance to talk about the ones they nominated. Do you want to start, Melody?
Certainly. I, I believe Cheryl is a, is an excellent candidate. I also believe that Mr. Whittington is also a very good candidate. I, I think we, we're getting a good of both worlds there.
Ricky?
I think John is a great candidate. He works in flowers, he works with flowers every day. He does arrangements, he's done the arrangements outside of the Graham Soda Shop. So I think he, he has a great grasp on the appearance of the city and how it should look.
He, he, he was the one that went to the Business Association and I think worked with the Business Association to get some flowers in the downtown because in those boxes, you know, that go around, more of like a actual, you know, flower arrangement, not just, not just one type of flower. He actually did like a design and presented that, I think.
Are these what are in the planters, currently in the planters?
I think, I know that he worked with, I think Mary and, and, and then I think one of, when we were doing the architectural tours, one of the ladies that was in that, doing that tour talked to Mr. Byrd about, you need to get on the Appearance Commission, you need to get on the Appearance Commission, so he applied. So I think he has a lot of, I think he would be a big help in the Sesquicentennial Park for sure. If you can get that help from him for free, I would jump all over that. And the same thing for a landscaper, that, that, I love Cheryl Ray, I've served on other boards with her, I think she's an excellent candidate. And let it show for the record, me and Melody agree that these two candidates are excellent. In fact, all three of them are excellent. But it's, I think, just my, what I'm wanting is, is somebody that will do more of the appearance of flowers and things like that. So I think that's what's needed on the board.
Anything there?
No, sir.
Okay, I'm going to.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir?
Just a question, how do these happen to be, are these vacancies caused by resignation to retirement?
Retirement, as you say, resignations when they, they might have finished a term out and didn't want to be back on it.
And when you ultimately decide, Mr. Mayor, who would distinguish, I see here, one of them's in 2021, one in 2022. So if you're just to make clear who gets what?
Okay. All right. So what we're going to do is.
Are any of these applicants on any other boards or commissions?
Good question, I don't know.
Not on, not on, not these applicants, no.
All right, what I'm going to do is call for the 2022 first and we're going to do it alphabetically by a raise of hands. So it would be John Byrd first, all in favor of John Byrd? We've got five. Next one alphabetically would be Mr. Ray.
Sarah.
We had three nominations. Nobody voting for Mr. Ray?
That's a Mrs. Ray.
Mrs. Ray, my fault. And last, we have Ronald Whittington. And Mr. Byrd was 2022. Whittington was 2021. We had nominations first names, three of them were nominated. Was that you asking about the alphabetical order? Anyway, that's. All right, next we have the Historical Museum Advisory Board, we have one vacancy. It expires in 2022. We have three people interested in it, Bonnie Hutchinson who is here, Bobby Chin is here and Karen Chin, and she's here too.
I say that Chin should fight it out.
She can take him, so no, let's don't do that.
Would any of them both want to speak?
All right, we will start alphabetically with, it looks like Bobby Chin. Do you want to speak, Bobby?
In favor of your wife?
Thank you, scared him, Jennifer. Mrs. Chin, do you want to speak?
I would be honored to serve, to serve the history of the city.
Thank you, ma'am. Bonnie? There she is.
I would also be honored to serve, I would like to participate in telling Graham's story and putting together the Graham app so that everyone can.
Thank you, ma'am. Y'all, I know both of these ladies and both of them would be a great addition to the board. I'll go to.
I think, does, y'all asked earlier, does, do, do any of those people already serve? Because doesn't Bonnie already serve?
On the tree board?
Yeah.
Let me say to, as liaison to this board, that both of these individuals has been to numerous meetings at this point, have been serving as docents and been available. We can't do any better than either of these. We are going to have a very difficult decision. I hope that whoever is not chosen and voted on by this board will continue to be involved. The city should be honored to have you both.
Ricky, you want anything? I'm going to mirror what Melody just said, we, we can't go wrong with this one other than disappointing someone. So we will take it alphabetically with Ms. Chin first. Ms. Hutchinson? Okay. So Ms. Chin wins. She will be on the historical board and expires 2022. Next, we have a Historic Resources Commission, one vacancy, expires 2021. We have Scott Pickard and Stephanie Ruiz, Ruiz.
Make a recommendation of Scott Pickard. He was a longtime employee of the city of Graham and I think he would do a good job for us.
First, let's let them speak. We'll start with Scott Pickard. Thank you, sir. And Stephanie, is she here? Thank you, ma'am. So Jennifer is.
I think we can kill two birds with one stone here, Mayor. We can, we could, Stephanie's applied for several different boards, so we, we, I think we could put her on the tree board and then put Pickard on the board that he applied for as well, and then still be able to get both good candidates.
I believe you're right because there wasn't any, there's two vacancy on tree, tree board, but let's go with our program as we have been doing. Let's vote on this and then we'll move down to the tree board, okay? So first would be Mr. Scott Pickard, Scott again. I'll vote for Scott. And Stephanie then. So Scott would be on that board until 2000, 2021. Next, we've got the Local Firefighters Relief Fund, one vacancy, and Alan Stacy has been nominated by the fire department to be on that board. So that is a no-brainer, everybody in favor of Alan Stacy. Recreation Commission, one vacancy, expires 2021. Amy Gross, Ross? Is our only applicant. So all in favor of Amy Gross? And last but not least, we have the tree board with two vacancies, expired 2022 and Ms. Ruiz. Let me vote on this and then we'll be right back with you. All in favor of her? Thank you.
My question is for your department, are these vacancies the new positions that were just added?
Yes. What, what year? Now, tree, what, what year for her?
I'm sorry, 2022. The next thing we're taking care of is city council appointment for outside agencies. The first one is Alamance County Community Services. This is assigning us the task of working with these boards. The A is the Alamance County Community Services and that position is always taken by the standing mayor or sitting mayor, whichever one you want to look at. So that's me. So that's me. B is Almanzt County Economic Development Committee. And we will start with the senior person, which would be Chip.
Mayor, can I address that?
You address what?
The, the senior person.
Yes.
I served on this board for six years and now want a seat for four more years. I would contend that I would be senior over, if this, I mean, I learned about this yesterday of who gets to pick what. That's not the way we did it 10 years ago, but-
No, it's the way I've always known.
No, I'm just saying, it wasn't the way we did it 10 years ago.
No, it's not. It's, you know, the seniority of this board does not have any other good things about it, you know? It's all, everybody votes their conscience. And are you saying you should vote in front of Chip?
No. I think Chip's been on here longer than I have, but I've been on longer than Melody. Melody's been on longer than Ricky.
The question that's never come up before. And we flipped a coin last night to see who would vote in front of, between Ricky and Jennifer. And Jennifer won that, that flip. So you're questioning your seniority to Melody. And I'm gonna say no, I think, I think she's still senior.
I think we can flip a coin then.
I think let's do a consensus. Who believes, would that please, would that suit you?
I mean, I just, I don't understand why, where this rule comes from. It's not written down anywhere. I'm happy to serve on a committee, but I'd like to be able to have the pick of my committee in either three or in four. I don't, you know, I, I think that primarily four. And I know that Melody wanted the Historic Resources Commission, I wanted the Historic Resources Commission. I have 30 years' experience doing historical renovation. I'm fine with giving it up, if she's fine with giving it up, and, and it can go to another board member, but-
I'm gonna go to the lawyers. This is, this is my call, right? We'll do it the way I said we'll do it.
That's fine. Six, six years of seniority, though, is all I was saying. If we're gonna go by seniority, then-
I don't quite understand what the question is.
She's wanting to bump Melody at senior.
She wants a board that, that I've asked for. That's all that's forced down to her.
Well, nobody's asked for any so far. Nobody has asked for any board so far.
At the agenda meeting, everybody-
You were on the Economic Development Committee, and then this issue came up, and I'm puzzled. I don't understand.
I am too.
Is there a designation for the Economic Development?
There's no designees yet. We have to go through them, and we're gonna go through them in my determination of seniority, which is Chip, Melody, and these two flipped a coin because they're brand new on the board. They flipped a coin, Jennifer won, and then Ricky will be last.
But as, as you'll see, how they have it all worked out, I'll, I won't get up.
Nobody.
It's okay.
It's a choice.
I just think it should be fair for everybody to be able to pick what board that they serve on, your, your Mayor Peterman.
It is fair. I will go last. How about that? Okay. Except I am the chair of that board. I'm not the chair, but I'm on that board because it is the sitting mayor. Anyway, Chip, what do you want to do?
I'll take B. Economic Development Committee.
Melody, your first choice.
I'll take E, Transportation Advisory Committee.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Ricky?
I'm gonna take C.
Only thing we have left is the alternate for Piedmont Tribe Regional Council. Does anybody want to volunteer to be on that?
I think Ricky, you were on there, right?
He is the main.
Right. I'll do the alternate.
Got those? Okay. All right. Next, we go to the county, the City Council Liaison Discussion and Appointment. These are the interior boards for the city, the Appearance Commission, the Audit Committee, the Resources, Historic Resources Commission, the Historical Museum, Recreation Commission, and the Tree Board. The Audit Committee is the sitting mayor, so I'm on that committee automatically. And we'll go to A, and we'll start with Chip again.
Okay, I'll do Recreation Commission Board.
Melody, please.
Historic Resources Commission.
Jennifer, please.
It's fine. I don't need a board.
Okay. Ricky, please. Go back to Chip.
Which one did you pick, Ricky?
I passed.
He passed. I'm sorry. I'll take the Appearance Commission.
Yeah, Appearance Commission.
Yes.
What we got left?
What we've got left is Historical Museum Board and the Tree Board.
Which one you want to split?
I'll let you pass if you want to, and I'll go to Melody.
I'll pass.
Okay.
I'm sorry, which one did Melody pick?
He took the Historic Resources Commission.
Right. Okay.
Passing also?
Yeah, I'll pass.
Then I'll go to Melody again.
Historical Museum Advisory Board.
Does anybody want to be on the Tree Board? And I will take the Tree Board. So, everybody all right with that?
No, but-
I'm sorry, Chip.
Jerry, I just want someone on the board that's gonna be unbiased.
Her job to be unbiased, and she will.
I agree. That's why I said I was willing to give it up.
All right. Next, we're going to number five. It's Water Tower Image Design. For everybody's information, we're gonna paint the water tower. It's 10 years in, and we're gonna try to come up with a different design. That's what it looks like right now. And this is just a discussion. If you have anything to add to the discussion, just raise your hand. We'll, we'll let you discuss with us. So Frankie, you want to talk about it for a second?
I'd be glad to. Aaron has somewhat spearheaded the effort. This is part of routine maintenance through our service contract for maintenance of the water tank. There's a few examples up there. Aaron can probably go into more detail. We don't have a brand ID or a color scheme that's officially adopted, but our Utilities Department has somewhat adopted a blue tone, and we do have somewhat of a blue theme with some of our informational and directional signage around town. So these are a couple of renderings. Aaron, you want to?
Yes. Yeah, basically what you see on the screen, some of the ideas that we have sort of tossed back and forth with the individual. We have Southern Corrosion, but the opportunity of us being able to use certain elements from some of these pictures, mainly the color. We're trying to go with, like Frankie said, a blue theme. Currently, our tower has sort of a muted green, I guess you can say, and with the, with the block letter Graham written out, it's an opportunity for us to do a different color scheme. Blue, white has been sort of the colors that we've thrown back and forth. Also, if you look at the, I'm hoping I'm pronouncing it right, the case tower, the, sort of the, the water ribbon that's at the bottom, we're looking to incorporate that if the opportunity presents itself into our tower as well. If not, then maybe the thing with the blue and the water droplet. So we want to soften up the, the lettering, the font, from the block letter into a softer lettering and, and basically work with them to come up with something that keeps within budget, but also accentuates the tower. It's an opportunity, being that the tower is a prominent fixture in the city. You can see it from the interstate. You can see it around town. We just would like a census from council to move forward with some of the elements that you see on the screen.
Question for the staff. I'll start with Jennifer, please.
Just want something, I don't, I love the, the water drop, but I don't know, looking at it from a distance, I mean, even sitting here and looking at it, I don't know that, I think it takes away from being able to read Graham. So I'd love to be able to make it something that would attract people to be able to say, hey, let's stop and take a picture or stop and visit this town. We had talked in the agenda meeting about possibly something artistic, but if we're not gonna go with something artistic, at least have the Graham that is the font so large that you can see it, you know, from the interstate. I printed out a picture, and I agree with the mayor in the meeting that I would like to see Graham both coming both sides from, from Raleigh and also coming from Greensboro. Being able to, you know, see that, see that image, I think, would look good for Graham.
And if I can add, the, the size of those letters would probably be pretty close to what we currently have. The rendering that you see with the water droplet, when you add an image on top, it sort of shrinks the wording. So it's not gonna be that size. So it's just a, it's just a default with the program. So I, I wouldn't look at that per se, as far as what it's gonna look like on the tower. It's just that, that feature on the website does that when you add an image on top.
Did you just call me Melody? I don't know.
Melody, please.
I, I like the, I like the cleanness of the blue or the white. I do think that the white's gonna get dirty and look grungy. I think that the blue is our best case. I agree with the staff. I do, I would like to see my first choice of the logo, so however, would be probably the ribbon prior to the water. But the water droplet, I think, again, may interfere with the lettering unless you can make it a really good, do a really good job of bringing out those letterings. I do like the different fonts as well, then, much better than what we have right now.
Thank you. Again.
I like the one up in the upper left-hand corner. I like the lighter blue at the top in the darker frame. And I like the water, I love the water drop on it. It's awesome.
Yes, sir. I like the top left. Got the water drop, two-tone blue.
I think, I'm fine with any of them. I just wanted it on both sides, so you can see it coming or going. Does anybody from the floor have anything to add to this? Come up, Eric Wood, please. Didn't have to take your coat off.
You, you gonna be here that long?
Eric Crispin, 208 Albright Avenue. You mentioned that we don't have a branded logo.
I did not mention.
You said we don't have a-
We don't have a color palette, an approved.
Or a color font, something that you steps up with grandma.
We don't have a standardized color palette, font.
Well, my question is, why don't we? And that would make a good place to have one and to display it prominently on the water tower.
A lot of our stuff has been different shades of blue, and I think that's what they're saying, that we could do some different shades of blue and be within what we've used.
Well, I, I, okay. I'm suggesting that, that get a group of people together to say, and look at designs other than, that's personal, Aaron, that, that other than, than Aaron's pulling three designs out and, and, and putting them together, that, that somebody, Appearance Commissioner, somebody, come up with a, a brand for the city that you could use wherever.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Good suggestion. Anyone else? Come up, Laurie. Good to have you here tonight.
Laurie Pickard, 101 Southwood Court. I like the designs. I prefer, just as a citizen, the one on the top left. But I think that the way that our culture is, the word Graham with the water drop next to it would convey the message that it's Graham's water. So, just move it over, so it's not interfering with the lettering.
Okay, thank you. Good suggestion. Anyone else? How are you? Good to have you here tonight.
She's a designer.
604 Washington Street. I just want to say, I think the water ribbons are very dated, very dated. And if you were to use the water droplet in between, you could have Graham on one side, Graham on the other, then you could see it from both sides, and a water droplet in the middle. And that way, anybody looking at it gets the picture.
That's a good idea. Anyone else? Dan, it's good to have you here.
Thank you. Dan Cerros, 526 East Pine Street. Would you put back up the picture of our water tower? Okay, um, that's across the middle. So, I mean, I like the placement of where it is on there. I like the two using the upper and lower, lowercase. That really makes you read the word. When it's all uppercase, you just look at it, but you read it when you, when you see it with the, but I think the difference is, if you look at that compared to the upper left-hand picture, the proportions are considerably different. So I'm just saying, consider the proportions of the upper and lower part on our tower rather than that one there. I like the blue. I like the water droplet. I like what everyone said. I'm just saying, make sure you're seeing it with our tower rather than with that proportion.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? All right. So what do we tell the staff that we want to do?
How does the board feel about possibly doing something artistic?
I think we're sort of in a time crunch right now. When is the date of us starting to work on this?
They're looking to start in February sometime. I don't have the exact date.
That's the reason they bring it to us now. Company that does our maintenance scheduled this now.
We're just trying to get ahead of that and say, well, can we do something?
Just trying to think if there's a possibility of putting something up that could attract, you know, 145,000 people pass by that interstate, and they stop and take pictures of the Georgia Peach Water Tower and the, you know, these different kind of, there's a really good, there's a good one I found on Pinterest that was, that was very artistic, and it was, it was beautiful, and it kind of became a, I know you wouldn't necessarily think of a water tower as a tourist destination, but, you know, once it, people start taking pictures with it, you know, it's a, it's a fun thing. So if we, if we don't want to go along that line and we just want to go with a name, I like the idea of having the, if you want to keep the water drop in the middle and having Graham on both sides, I think seems to be, I think the majority would maybe go for that.
What about the two-tone, like Ricky said, with the light blue on the top and a little darker blue on the bottom? Like the top left?
Is that two-tone? Oh, yeah, that is two-toned, yeah. That font just needs to be bigger.
It does. Like the bottom.
Yeah.
I like the font on the bottom, but then I do the square font.
This is, as long as the font is as big on that space as you can get it to get the best visual.
Give it the size it is now. It'd be a six-foot height.
Only concern that I had, I love the blue, but the only concern I had about the blue was that against a blue sky, was that not gonna make it stand out?
Graham stand out.
I mean, well, yeah, may, may, I mean, if you want the image to fade into the background and just the name, maybe that's a good thing, but-
Well, someone suggested white letters.
Because you really can't read that black on blue.
Over time, if I could just give a little graphics experience, over time, however, the top, the light blue is going to fade. If you're talking a 10-year time period, and the more it would fade, the less the white would show. And also, could I have a question just about the droplet idea?
Yes.
Is it a droplet in between Graham on both sides or just one plus?
If we did it, we'd do it on both sides, I'm sure. All right. Have we got some sort of- All right, have we got some sort of consensus here? We'll, how about the two-tone blues? Everybody all right with that? Lighter blue at top, darker blue at bottom. And the font of the three, which one would you like?
I like the bottom one myself.
I do too.
In a dark color.
Do you think if you put that white on a light blue, you see the one at the bottom? If you put that white on a light blue at the top, do you think that would, how light a light blue, I guess?
Well, I think.
You want it to stand out, so you want to have a.
The dark black.
Why don't you put the dark behind the letters and the light below? Would that be okay?
I would like the font on the bottom in the black.
As was mentioned, that blue probably will fade and white wouldn't be seen as well.
If we put it in black, though, we would be all right.
Right, I think so.
Is, is the bottom one would be the same size we're talking about? Is that, it looks bigger than the current one, but it would be the same?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't look at the size differentials between those two because, like I said, with the image, it distorts it. Yeah, so it's going to be the same size as the lettering that we currently have. That is six, about six feet in height.
So, if we go with black lettering and you outline the lettering in white, would that make it, because I know, like, I mean, Tom, what do you, I mean, like, when we, when we do billboards, they want to outline the lettering to kind of make it pop?
I mean, I certainly, all of these suggestions, I'm seeing. So, if he can do it, then obviously we can.
If we go with that lighter blue and you use black, Ricky, and then we outline the letters, it'd still be, the letters would be black, but just outline them in white, maybe that would make it pop more off the page.
Fine with me.
Fine with me. Doing it on both sides? Yes, everybody all right with that?
With the drops in between.
Drops in between, one on both sides. Okay, does that give you any guidance, though?
I have plenty. I'll come do it.
Okay, that's five of us, so, you know. It's a yearly maintenance fee, so what?
Off the top of my head, I do not know, but it's part of our annual maintenance contract. Yeah, we do various maintenance bids each year. Painting it happens every so many, eight to 10 years.
Information-wise, I think you and I wanted the Georgia G put on there when they first did it, but they said they would sue us. But let's do that. Okay.
The Graham G.
Fault from Georgia. trademark is Georgia. Okay, next thing we want to do is discuss the downtown master plan, and I will go to Jennifer. She asked for this to be on the agenda. Jennifer, if you would.
So, this is the first opportunity Ricky and I have been able to have this very controversial vision plan on the agenda. And I wanted to talk about some of the things that we still didn't, we were of the, at least I was of the agreement with Jerry at the time. Jerry said, and the reason that I got from him about voting against the master plan was, why do we want to put things in this plan that we have no intention of doing? And so, I'd like for us to be working on, on changing the master plan, but also the conditions for implementation here. Where we talk about additional planning and design should achieve pull-in parking on West and East Elm Street where possible. Is there, I guess, I want to talk to the council about their thoughts about changing these things where there's all of these kind of conditional words put in here. Because when you go down a couple of bullet points down, it says additional planning and design should eliminate the idea of a splash park. So, that's more of a definite, we're not doing this, we looked at this. Yes, it came from a consultant, but we didn't like it and we're, we want to eliminate any reference to that, any possible implementation, any design that might be implemented. We don't want to be applying for grants for whatever that specific thing is for the downtown, whether it's the widening of the sidewalks, whether, whatever, whatever any particular city councilman has an issue with that currently sits on this council, I would like to know what those issues are. And obviously, I thought, it was my belief that when we won the election, that we would have the votes to rescind the master plan. I'm getting some pushback on that from some council members. I want to have, and I want to do, what my base elected me to do, and I'm, I'm going to push that through, whether it wins or it loses. I feel like I have to do what these people have asked me to do. So, I want to hear from the council, I want to hear from the public about their feelings about the master plan. Clearly, this was a hot topic issue when we were running and I want to definitely be a part of Graham's vision going forward. I don't, I really, honestly and sincerely do not believe we are as far apart on this issue as people have made it out to be. I don't want the downtown businesses to lose, to lose in whatever vision we're putting forward going forth. I don't want us to be applying for grants that make them feel that, that there are certain things that are going to affect their business, whether it's good, whether it's bad. We need to discuss those things. You might have one thing in this plan that's going to help a business, you might have one that's going to hurt a business. But I think that we need to not just take what a consultant gave us and add a one-page addendum and go forward. I think we need to do the work. And so, I just want to hear what the remainder of the council feels about that and how willing they are to make changes to the plan. That's what I want to hear.
Well, me, I'll start that. I appreciate the idea of us taking this plan that needs to be in place and rework the parts of it that need to be reworked. To do that, I'll use the parking around Court Square as an example. I think the parking around Court Square needs to be in concrete, that we will not do anything about that. That's one of my P's. Why do we not want to rescind the entire plan? Because we have to have a plan in place. It's the reason we started this. We have to have a plan in place for the state to take us serious about repaving and the changes we need to make for the infrastructure during those repaving. And to do that, if we rescind the entire plan now, we still got to have something in place for the deal. So, I'm ready to talk about any one thing at a time and move along with it and take it one time, one thing at a time. Again, like the parking around Court Square, let's do something reasonable about that. Add a few twists to it where we would increase our parking around downtown, like the clerk of court parks are eight to five, Monday through Friday. Well, Friday night, why don't you think that be used for me or Tom or somebody that's downtown? So, let's tweak it a little bit. So, I'm perfectly willing to do that.
Excuse me, as I've stated, I voted against the plan. There's a lot about the plan I don't like. But we have it. I'm not for the whole plan. I don't think we need to rescind the whole plan and start that whole thing over again. But I do believe that there's things in the plan we need to change and we can do that without rescinding the plan and, and, and get your, your, your thing that you wanted to do by, you know, what you ran on, completed. I mean, we can just pull the things out of the plan and have a, have a good plan, but not rescind the plan. I'm not for the plan we have, but I think we're making a mistake by rescinding it. There's several things that I'd like to see pulled out of the plan and that would, would help everything. So, I, I'm with the mayor.
What are those, what are those changes?
There's a couple of changes I'd like to make, pull the trees out of it. The trees. I've talked with Mark Danley, our agriculture extension agent for the county, and I've got his opinion. His opinion, trees are bad in town. Number one, it wouldn't be a problem when you first plant them, but as they get larger, you scream the storefronts off. Secondly, I've talked to some firemen, it's hard to fight fires through trees. If, if, if there's been trees in front of carvers, they may have lost the whole block. They almost did. Secondly, there's roots, there's limbs, there's also leaves and that would constantly be having to be worked. And another thing, white oak trees that they, they want to put in. Well, white oaks have acorns, some years, a lot more than other years. But those acorns on the sidewalks are going to be like marbles. Can you imagine walkability downtown, walking on marbles, somebody's going to fall and get hurt? So, that's, I'd like to see the trees come out. Secondly, I'd like to see the widening of the sidewalks come out. If you widen the sidewalks, then you're going to change the street. If you go to change the main street, that's under DOT rule and you're going to do it exactly the way they want you to do it and it's going to be very costly because then we're going to have to take care of the drainage. Right now, as it is, DOT comes in, resurfaces, they're supposed to. If there's a drainage issue, they got to take care of it. It's their street. So, if we pull it, widen the sidewalks out on Main, East and West Elm and South Main, I, I, that's the two issues I have. And maybe some wording, and we can clean some wording up. I don't have a problem with that.
Melody, your response, please.
Yes, sir. Obviously, I'm in favor for what the city council passed originally. Now, what this doesn't mean is that I've been for a director for 35 years as a department head and done numerous master plans and numerous comprehensive plans. You're too early to be doing detail at this point. The, the point about doing this, am I interested in seeing some things changed? Yes, possibly. Is there a better, can we work to a better way? Yes, there is. But right now, you're doing nothing but trying to get to detail and then sit it on a shelf and wait for the period of time which you would like to take it off and start to work with it. That could be five years, that could be 10 years down the road. We have other issues that are more pressing right now. So, it could be years before we could pull this off. At that time, no one has a crystal ball to say, we need to completely pull this out right this minute. It doesn't make any sense to pull something and to go into detail and make a plan that's going to sit on the shelf after you spend all this time for five or 10 years and which things will change over time. So, the, the whole point of making changes, I am not against making changes. I am against making them at this time. Your timing is incorrect. And I believe that we can make changes, we can all do better. I also caution this council, there are no, including myself, there are no engineers sitting on this board. One move and one wrong decision will affect other decisions and that's why the previous council left this as a hole. We are talking water runoff and other issues that are affecting, one decision will affect another and it's important that we leave it intact until we get ready to use it and we see it as a whole.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm sorry, mayor, since I directed the question, can you ask Melody what those changes that she would want?
Do you want to answer that question?
I do not.
Okay, you wanted to wait until the proper time to make the change.
Absolutely. There is more appropriate time to speak to those and now it's not it.
I know I didn't answer your question, but that's your answer.
I mean, I just, I do want her to be part of the process. I'd like to know, I sincerely would like to know what her, what changes she would like to see made.
As we move forward, she will definitely be part of the process, remember this. Process, there's no doubt.
That's for sure.
Ricky, your response, please.
As Jennifer spoke, we both ran on the same platform.
Would you do me one favor and get closer to Mike?
Like Jennifer spoke, we both ran on the same platform of the master plan. Everyone that we spoke to was in favor of killing it outright. I think that there are a few things that we could keep into it. But with that being said, unless we can, can come to a consensus, I'm willing to kill it.
All right, I think we've all discussed it.
So, so, mayor, then you would not be in favor of rescinding the plan?
I would not. Truly, because it's in place now and as Melody said, it's a long ways down the road for anything we've done, just like we said all along. But it needs tweaking. Stuff done to it. Before the DOD gets here. If they're looking at us right now, they're saying they have a plan in place. Honor that.
I guess my issue is that, you know, you know, we certainly, a lot of the businesses, a lot of the downtown residents, a lot of the long-time residents came and, you know, this was a very contentious election and obviously, everybody that voted for me knew how I would vote if I got on this council about the master plan. People voted for you, I think, with the idea that you also would vote a certain way. Think they.
You could run unopposed, yeah.
I understand that, mayor, but I, I do understand that. But if, but I'm saying, even if you would have run unopposed, I think if you would have been saying you were for the master plan, I do think it would have affected your numbers substantially. Even though you were running unopposed, yes, you would have won. But I think that, you know, it's easy to say you're against something when they have three votes to pass it and then when you have the votes now to defeat it, you don't want to defeat it. And I, I'm just asking you to do what you have said. I'm not asking not to have a master plan. I'm asking to rescind the plan that we have and come up with a plan that everybody can work with that, and we, I mean, people came and literally begged this council to listen to them to just change and take out the things. I mean, there was, I don't think there was a single thing when we met that we disagreed on about this master plan. So, it just, it really kind of bothers me that we can't sit down at a table, come up with things that we want to take out of this plan that will not get people up in arms when they read it.
We just said we'd do that.
Well, I'm saying, why, why do we want to have something in place that we're going to turn right around and change?
May I speak?
Yes, please.
Jennifer, I hear you saying that we're not that far apart, and you're right, we're not, except for on one issue. And, and you're saying, change the plan in one breath, and the next breath, you're saying rescind it. I mean, why rescind it when we can go in and revise it and redo it the way the people want it? And you're still making, you're still good on your campaign promise. We're giving everybody what they want. And, and I don't understand why you're going to go rescind it and then come back and then you're going to spend more money in design and development and, and turn around and have to go through all these meetings we had and they were contentious. So, and I'm sure some of the changes you make may be a little contentious, but it isn't going to be like it was. So, you, you say in one breath, change it the way we want it to be, and then you say, rescind it. I, I just, I, I think the best thing, and you have, I think you could have a consensus, if we did do that, go in and change the things that we can make it better, and you've even said that. Make it better and, and leave the plan, but by making it better, we are helping it. I, I don't understand why you want to just totally rescind it and then start all over again. Because you got, you're going to have to start all over again and that, that's going to be very painful. And it'd be painful anyway to change some of the things in it. But I hear you saying, one minute, change the things in the plan we need to change or don't like about it, and in the next breath, you say rescind it. I, I'm confused. But I think you would have less headaches and you'd have more favorability with the people from, with the downtown people and people in Graham if we did. and people in Graham if we did change the plan to be better than what it is now. I don't agree with the plan right now. I would hate to have to vote to rescind it because I don't really know what I'd do. I don't like the plan, but I think we can do it without rescinding. And that's just my take on it.
So Jerry, how long would you anticipate it take us to come to a final agreement on the changes? You said you wanted to take one issue per month, and I'm fine with doing that. I guess I just, or I prefer to take more than one issue per month, but...
I think two issues per month.
I just, I just don't want this to be like drug out, drug out, drug out while this existing plan is in place.
The reason I say one thing per month is this, nothing's going to be done with this plan for years to come.
Oh, I hear that. I've heard that so much. So if nothing's going to be done, then why do we need to have it passed? For grants? Tell me what grants we want for, to end up with this. Tell me what grant you want to end up with this.
Guess what? I don't have to...
With that vision.
I don't have to answer that question.
You're secretly applying for grants that the public doesn't know about and the other council members don't know about?
Nope, there aren't any secrets, Jennifer. There are the staff who are working on a regular basis.
Okay. All right, hold on, hold on, hold on.
The one thing we got to do is DOT is coming in two to three years. They're coming. If we're not ready, they're going to do their thing, and we're not going to have a say. That's what I'm saying. Let's pull things out, let's just revise the plan.
Okay.
I was told over and over by staff and by certain members of this council that nothing would be done on this, nothing would happen whatsoever on this, on the implementation of this plan until we had an opportunity to make changes. I won't, I know that that is the truth if the plan is rescinded, and that puts the other side in the situation where they have to work with the new people to be able to pass something, which, you know, that's my goal. I have only a goal of trying to work with everybody to pass something that everybody can live with. And Jerry, honestly, was there anything that we disagreed about? I can't think of anything.
You're disagreeing with procedure. You know, if we end this thing right now and we rescind this plan, then we've, in essence, flushed $50,000. Plus, we would have to pay to have another plan developed, and it's got to be by somebody that DOT recognizes. It can't be me doing it. It's got to be recognized by the DOT for them to see this stuff. These guys that did it were recommended by the DOT. They recommended them and paid a third of it.
I'm going to use your own words. We don't want to pass something that's going to make somebody worry about the, selling their property. We don't want to pass something that we don't want to implement. That's your own words, and I...
I agree, and I'm fine with working on it. I'm fine with working within the parameters of this. We'll get to the floor in just a few minutes. I'm fine with working within the parameters of what we've got. There'd be a plan in place that is in, being molded, if you want to put it that way. But I'm not ready to pull it completely off now. When I did try to make a motion to pull it completely off, we had the town broken into two sides, and we were fighting with each other, and I was ready to end that to heal the town. Now it's passed, and what this council done in the past is if five of us are here, three of us voted one way and two voted the other, the three that voted for it, the two that lost still got behind the truck and pushed it down the road. And that's what we need to do. We have to respect what this council has done, but we need to tweak it. And that's my opinion.
We can fix this.
You're taking, you're taking the power of the election away from the people. When they, when they don't agree with something, what do they do? They go to the ballot boxes, and they put people in place to make changes that they won't. And I am, I don't feel like we disagree on anything but the procedure of how this should be implemented, Jerry. But I do think that the plan has a lot of things that upset people when they read it, and I feel like we need to do everything we can to make changes to this plan, and I don't want it sitting out here lingering during the time that it takes us to make those changes. I don't want people applying for grants. I want some consensus by this council that no grants will be in process for those things, and somebody's...
The details of the plan. You don't want anybody to put in a grant to put a water feature down.
We, early on, we saw that the people that were putting this plan together kind of were out and left field, so to speak, on some of the ideas that they had for downtown. And we begged the council to give them more of a guidance to say, hey, don't come back with a plan that isn't going to, that's going to be controversial, split this town down the middle. We didn't want that. We begged, you know, kind of for that guidance to be implemented and not just come back with something that's kind of out. You experienced that, Jerry. You said yourself, if the city of Graham put this to a vote, people would, it would not pass. It would fail overwhelmingly. So I'm elected by the people, and if they don't want it, that's how I'm going to vote. And that's what I'm going to do.
And see if they want it.
Well, in the meantime, they, that, they elected me to, to...
They see you working on it. I mean, people are not that unreasonable, Jennifer. If they see us working on it and trying to make it better, I think they will accept my opinion.
All right, do you want some sort of consensus about rescinding the plan? Is that what you want to do?
I want a consensus at least that nothing will be done while we're working on this plan.
I'll ask for that, for sure. Melody?
No, I will not, I will not bind the staff to begin work because, simply because, if they begin work and start looking at grants, it will get taken off the shelf, and there will be details oriented which will, are looked at, which will then come back to the board, which then would be the appropriate time to make changes.
Okay, Ricky?
Hold on just a second. I recommend, I make a recommendation that we not move forward with any of the plan.
So you're saying, yes, you're saying that you are giving your consensus that nothing starts without our knowledge?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I think that, I feel, I feel okay with not moving forward until we get this worked out. It shouldn't take that long, and we could, we're not ready to start grants right now anyway. So I think just looking at it and being calm, take a look at this and not do anything drastic, and work on this thing, and let's give ourselves six months. If that's too short, I don't know. Let's just give ourselves a time to work this out and see what we can do, and then if we can't come together, then we got to do something else.
All right, I will say yes on the consensus not to move forward. The staff will let us know if anything's coming up that would, would move towards doing some changes.
Council, do we make a motion?
Just close something now. Go ahead, Eric.
Here we go.
Well, there's nothing that's on the table or anything, but just speaking with DOT this week, DOT is looking to pave sooner rather than later. But only if we don't have any impending plans to do anything in that space. So, I mean, this conversation, we had a meeting yesterday. This is what we talked about at the end of our TRC, so...
The sooner they come, the better. My opinion.
I guess the point of clarification is, do we want to ask DOT to continue to not do anything?
No, we want to pave as soon as possible.
Well, we got to do the water and sewer before they pay.
Right. But that's...
That's going to take time.
If we want to, if the council wants us to ask DOT, we can ask. That's perfectly fine.
How close are we on our schedule with the water sewer versus their scheduled pave?
We're a year to 18 months out.
Indifference. Now, are they saying that they're a year to 18 months? We decided that we were a year to 18 months out getting the water and sewer issues complete.
But they'd be fine coming this summer to pay.
So we do need to actually hold them just a little, if not a little bit more, because we need to get the water sewer done while we are going through the process of the paving.
Keep in mind, we have not appropriated any funds to start water sewer. That's typically something that we would start addressing here in the budget cycle. Just, I was informed yesterday of the discussion that other staff members had.
What are your feelings on that and our relationship with DOT, Frankie?
I will be happy to ask them to delay. If we don't want, if we want time to revisit things, I will ask them, no problem. Just a point of clarification, because we were uncertain as to what to tell them.
Well, we got time to revisit things because we got to get the water sewer done. That's a year to 18 months. I think we could have this resolved in eight, a year to, inside 18 months. I would hope we could.
The water sewer is the reason for this whole thing, so yes, we need to do that.
Actually, according to DOT, all that we need is a water and sewer plan. And we got that. Well, we got to get, I mean, that's what I'm saying. Water sewer plan, get started on it, and then they're coming. They don't care what, they don't care if we plant trees or change parts. They don't care.
So that's what I'm concerned about. You've got, you've got a complete rework of your downtown, and if with... Of the master, the master plan is...
Well, that's, that's true, but I'm sorry, I'm honest with you.
I'm just saying, I don't want to pay, I don't want this same thing to come up with saying, oh, we've paid for all these engineering fees and we want to make changes. We don't want this. Are they going to be making those engineering drawings based on this plan as it is? That's why...
The, 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 the design group has nothing to do with DOT. They didn't redesign streets or anything else other than parking what they wanted to do. I mean, DOT is going to come in, and they're going to pave once that water and sewer is taken care of. They're going to come in and pay.
Right, but the water and sewer drawings...
They haven't started yet.
Are they going to be in the same place where they are right now? Is anything going to change with the implementation of the water and sewer?
I can't answer that.
They'll do surveying, they'll, they'll do a complete water sewer plan, and we don't know that until we get plans. Is that right?
Yeah, we won't, we won't know until they...
Yeah, they got to do their, their engineering design on the water sewer, and then we'll know something, but...
Are they going to use the master plan in order to draw those plans?
No, in my opinion, no.
Aaron?
I'm not sure exactly how to answer that question, only because council's already given us the nod to explore, looking into upgrading our utilities. So, I mean, we haven't taken the next step, which is to allow them to go in and do design and all that. So I, I don't know.
But that was all the risers for the sprinkler system, handicap accessibility, and this kind of stuff. It wasn't anything that was decorative.
Yeah.
I mean, it was all stuff that would help the downtown that's needed.
It was all the stuff underneath the street. The stuff that's left in the plan that we keep discussing back and forth up here is all above the street.
Well, the, some of the risers in the sprinkler and the...
Well, technically, but they, they come in from down below.
Let me clarify what I was asking. It probably means more coming from the council to tell DOT, can you give us more time? If that's the consensus to not implement anything, do you want me to ask DOT to hold off as well?
Why would we need more time?
Because we won't be ready when they're ready. If they're ready to go this summer, if they're ready to go this summer and we're not ready, that's all we're asking for.
I did that for 30 years. They're not going to come until we say we've got our water sewer taken care of. They can't.
That's all Frankie is looking for, is a consensus or a vote from us.
Well, I'm fine to wait on the paving until the engineering is done.
We got to. We got to.
We got to do that.
Well, Jerry, do you mind making that phone call? I think that's what Frankie's asking is...
I will be glad to make it.
On behalf of the council. So Brian, may I ask whether we need to do a vote on the, on us agreeing that nothing will move forward with this plan until we have made the changes?
I don't see us doing that. I'm sorry to step on your feet because we did not, we did not publicize this as a vote. We publicly, we publicized it as a discussion. And if we, if we were going to vote on it, we need... What do you think?
Mayor, you know, I'm not totally familiar with the procedure, obviously, that this council follows, but you could, by consensus, hold the implementation in abeyance. And you can do it for a time certain, or you could agree to bring it back up another time, or you could vote, either one is clearly acceptable, you know? And you mentioned a point that was not advertised at the hearing, and I think, you know, have taken that point into consideration, you may want to consider, you know, majority here or the consensus is to hold it in the implementation and obey it. You can do that and move forward.
Attorney Bob Ward, you said it wasn't advertised.
I, I don't, I don't know. Mayor missed meaning.
Why, why was it not advertised?
It's advertised as downtown master plan discussion. Not solve anything, we're discussing it, we're talking about it.
But, okay, I literally asked for five things, all five things to be on the agenda, or maybe four things to be on the agenda, and I was only allowed to have one thing. Why, why would I need to clarify? There's, there's been master plan written on the agenda, and it was voted on. There's been master plan with the caveat that said, oh... There was another comment, and I remember you saying specifically at the meeting, at the end of the meeting, well, that wasn't a public hearing. So why, when I just asked for the master plan to be on, I'm just asking procedure-wise, why I'm being barred from being able to have that on there? I literally only want everybody to stick to what they say, so I want it in the legal record that we're not going to move forward with this plan until we have these changes made. All I'm asking is for everybody to stick to what they agree to.
But let's be clear, you're talking about just the plan that occurs above the street. That's what you're talking about, is the master plan. We also have another issue about the street being paved and the infrastructure, and that's what seems to be the more immediate need. And where we need to be, if we're going to do any voting, it needs to be in that area.
Well, I think right now we have a four-to-one consensus not to move forward with any parts of this master plan without notification of the board.
Okay, as long as that's in the minutes?
It is, it is now.
Be fine with, with that.
And to extend to DOT.
We will extend to DOT. I asked, I will call them as Jennifer, and ask if they will delay until we get the engineering at least done for our water and sewer, what we need to do. If we need to get it in the ground before they show up, let's get it in the ground. We have time to do that before our budget this year, because that's where the money's coming.
We can amend our budget at any time.
I thought we had a $3 million issue coming up.
$30 million.
Somebody tell me it was...
No, it's 30. Anyway, okay, ladies and gentlemen, what we've done is we decided nothing's going to be built, nothing's going to be torn down, nothing's going to be planted downtown without the council being notified in time for us to act on it. Except for the water and sewer underneath the ground. We're going to go forward with that. That was the reason for this downtown plan in the very first place. So we're going to go forward with that and get that done, and then we'll try to follow it right back up with the DOT when we can do that. Okay, is everybody all right with that?
I'm like, I'm fine with that. I just would like to see any plans for the, for the street improvements, and if it's going to affect any businesses downtown. Because even though it's in the ground, that's going to... And if it's going to affect any businesses downtown, because even though it's in the ground, that's going to affect those businesses. And they're going to want to be able to plan for that.
Yeah, we will do that. Problem enough. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, now we're going to go, all right, is everybody finished with the downtown master plan time? Did we answer all your questions?
I'll leave, yes.
Thank you. Uh, issue's not on tonight's agenda. We've got one request here in Page, uh, six fifty-one Williamsdale Avenue, uh, Williamsdale Road, excuse me. Here, I'm sorry we waited so long. You still owe us a dollar. Ms. Page, let's have your name and phone number, I'm naming address, please, and we appreciate you being here tonight.
Um, I'm happy to be here. My name is Erin Page. I live at six fifty-one Williamsdale Road, uh, Graham, North Carolina. Um, this is my first time here, so this was really exciting to be a part of and to watch, um, how all this happens. I'm, uh, I just wanted to ask, um, what we're doing about that, uh, hotel that's on the next exit.
Which one? There's two of them.
Oh, the scary one.
Both of them are.
Okay, I, so, um, but you know, we, we're doing all this work to, to make a beautiful water tower, to make our downtown beautiful. Um, we want people to stop. Um, I don't want to stop at that exit. So I just, I didn't know if, if there was, um, city ordinances, uh, being put in place to say, right, if you're within a hundred yards of the interstate, don't look like you might be hiding a dead body in the dumpster.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, so like I just.
He maintains that at the very bare minimum of us doing anything about it. Chip knows him better than I do, the owner. Um, they are at the minimum, but going down there and condemning them is not something we could do. He's been approached several times to sell these properties, and I think one day somebody will put a number up there that he can live with.
Can I speak to this? So it, something is in the works about those properties. And, um, so just cross your fingers everything's goes through. So there are some things that are being worked on, um, for those properties. So, um, uh, I, I think you, you'll be happy if, if we get the people that want to be able to do something. So, um, so we are working on those things. We're actually looking, trying to identify a lot of plighted areas in Graham and trying to read, either get this, the, the sellers to sell or, um, kind of approach them if they've never been asked before. So we are working on some of those things, and I know specifically they have talked to, um, three different people that are looking at that property right now. So, um.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you for sharing.
They have looked before at that property and he's got right to the brink and said no, so.
He's kind of notorious for that. But, you know, hopefully.
Chip, maybe you can get in there and grease the wheels.
I'm going to tell you, he, the big thing is, he don't need the money. He's got all he got, he don't, I mean, that's the bottom line. He don't need it, and somebody makes an offer and.
Didn't he invent Pam?
Yeah.
Pam cooking spray. So every time you use Pam cooking spray, he invented that.
He's a chemical engineer, and, I mean, he just don't need it. And so the time somebody comes up with an offer, or he offers it and they jump on it, he thinks, hmm, they jumped too quick. I need to ask for more money. And I mean, he's, he's a nice guy. He really is. He's a nice guy. But he just, he don't need to say it. But maybe, like Jennifer says, somebody coming on, or the mayor says, might come on sweeten that pot enough, he's good at thinking about it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page. We appreciate you being here. Okay, issue's not on tonight's agenda. Mary, have you got something for us?
Downtown Development Coordinator, Mary Fawcett, Mayor, Council. A celebration for downtown, or as I would like to say, a win for downtown, is that Graham has been selected into the Downtown Associate Community Program, which is a prerequisite step, stepping stone for the North Carolina Main Street Program. I invite you, Council, as well as the public, to next week's community meeting that will take place at Aliments Arts, Thursday, January twenty-third, five thirty to six forty-five.
Ma'am.
Thank you for your support in this endeavor as we were going through the application process.
Now, we'll have some information on it that night.
There will be representatives from the North Carolina Main Street Association to explain what it means moving forward for Graham and time at the end for questions to be asked.
And us and Murphy was selected to go first out of eight?
Out of six.
Six that they picked.
And we will also applaud that Meven, it was one that was selected as well.
Okay.
But a win for Aliments County and for Graham.
Thank you, ma'am.
And where is it?
It's going to be at Aliments Arts next Thursday.
If we're not available to go to that meeting, is there another meeting planned?
We'll talk if there's an opportunity during the day, maybe that I could connect you. They'll be here throughout the day. This will be their first time that they come as a site visit and introduce the program to the community. But they will have numerous visits moving forward monthly to begin with, so there will be opportunities.
I have a class that I've got to go to.
Okay, so if there's a conflict for that day, we can definitely connect in the future.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Erin, have you got anything?
No, sir.
If you would, you need to come up. Everything is recorded, and let us have your name and address, please, sir.
My name is Nick Odomaga. I live, I, I live at, um, Norfolk Village.
Yes, sir.
Ten seventeen B Ivy Road. I've been living here since, um, two thousand and eleven. This is just, I just stumbled onto this. I saw the, 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 the crowd, the, the cars parking all over the place. So I went to the library to see what was going on, nothing. So they told me it was here, so I had to come. Because this is an opportunity I've been trying to see how I, I can, you know, it can be possible. Please, please, I'm begging you, is there anything you can do about the very, very littered streets in, in, in Graham? If you don't know what I'm talking about, go to Ivy, Ivy Road tomorrow and see. It, it's, it's a disgrace, sir.
You talking about.
I've been to, um, to Raleigh, I've been to Durham, Greensboro, almost all, they look very, especially Durham is, it's, it's like, um, it's fucking, I don't know, and, and, and it's very, very clean, the streets. I come to Graham, everywhere is littered, all the streets are littered. I said to go down into this, you know, like say the gra, South, uh, Grand Education Park area, those places are fairly okay. But around the downtown here that we are discussing about this night, the streets are just, they are no good, sir. If you can't do anything about keeping these streets, you know, clean and clear from, um, trash, it will be just so wonderful. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
You're talking to the right man. Frankie will pass that along tomorrow. Thank you, sir. Uh, where was I? Bob and Brian, have y'all got anything else? Darcy, you called up?
I'm fine.
Have you got anything?
No, sir.
Melody?
No, sir.
Oh, sir.
Sorry, um, uh, the, I want to talk about the bike lane. Were you giving me a drum, drum roll?
No, I was crossing it off my list.
The bike lane, so everyone hates the bike lane, it seems, online, um, or at least that's predominantly the, the, um, comments. Um, and when they talked about in the paper about the bike lane being changed, they weren't referring to, I think, what a lot of people are concerned with, which is right there at the municipal, right here at this municipal building on the side here. Um, they were thinking that that's going to be fixed or changed, but, um, apparently it's the width of the lane down by the Board of Elections. So, um, since it doesn't seem to be, I guess, in the works or whatever about changing, I'd like to ask the council to see about how we could get that restrike to put the bike lane instead of in the center of the road, over to the right of the road, give the people the lane so that it matches the lane across the street. Um, because obviously, when you are sitting at Pine Street looking towards the Board of Elections, across the street, across five lanes of traffic, um, you can't see what's under somebody's car. And you're expecting that car that's clearly to the left, uh, well, if you're looking at it, it'd be to the right. You're expecting it to turn in front of you, so when you go to turn and it shoots out and goes straight, because it's a straight and turn lane now, it's, you know, obviously it's causing a lot of problems and a lot of concern for safety. So the lane now does not match the lane across the street, um, for the continuity. And I, I mean, everybody just seems to be calling and texting and saying, hey, I've, I must've been hit there four or five times. This is ridiculous. Why are you not fixing this? Um, and then when I called to see why it still hadn't been addressed, we at least got the warning signs out there. But, um, why it hadn't been addressed, um, I don't know that it is going to be addressed.
Okay, um, I'll put one more wrinkle into that. I have that on my list and stuff, too. Uh, with the way the turn left lane is, is backing up to the straight lane. It's going to back up into the fire department entrance and exit. Uh, it is going to block the fire truck one of these days, and I guarantee you that's what happened. So I'm going to ask the staff to call the DOT one more time, see if we can get it changed. And the answer you get for that, if it's more than a week, let's do it ourselves. It's our street, let's do it.
Just as an update, um, we did submit three alternative suggestions for DOT's review. I believe it was week before last, is that right?
Yeah.
So it's, it's under review by NC DOT.
Give them a couple more days and then us to go do it. I mean, it's something we got to take care of. This is ridiculous.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you.
It's ridiculous to have this this way.
I agree one hundred percent. It's ridiculous.
It's on our street, we can change it. Put the bike lane on the right side, the right turn lane on the right side, and the left turn lane where it should be. I mean, as simple as that, just do it.
Common sense government. Um, the second issue is the passage of the handbook for the Boards and Commissions, um, ordinance. We had talked a little bit about this in the agenda meeting, and we had talked about changing the ordinance um, in regards to term limits, subcommittees, um, whether those subcommittees could be, um, created by the independent boards, or whether the council needed to be able to do that. Um, and then we talked a little bit about the number of the boards on the, on the committee, but wanted to see what the feelings were of the council about, um, us reviewing the handbook. It's the first handbook that was created by this task force. And as far as, um, when I attended the meeting, um, it was the contention of Councilman, uh, Wiggins that, that didn't need to be approved by the, by the council. And I just think if it's, i- if it's a revision, I get it, but it's the first time that it's been created. And I would like to see the council, even if I hadn't been elected, I would have liked to have saw the council at least look at the initial handbook that's given to all the boards and commissions and have them review it and give their once over.
I agree, and he's looking at, uh, that on our agenda, not agenda, let's, let's put it on a steady plan that we can look at and see if there is changes that you want to make, and we'll go look at it.
Um, the next issue is the water policy. I just want to ask for that to be on the agenda next month. I have two citizens coming to talk about our current water policy of being able to backcharge people. The current policy, as it's written, if you, if a city worker goes out to your house and finds that your water meter has not been operating properly, you can be backcharged up to three years. I disagree with that policy. I want to see it changed. I don't think any person, especially a senior citizen, should be charged, you know, sixteen hundred dollars was the amount of this bill. Another bill was eighteen hundred dollars. Um, I don't agree with that. Um, I think that obviously, um, you know, there was no, uh, indication that it had been tampered with or anything like that. It just simply was a broken meter. And, um, I would like for this council to address that issue at next board meeting. I think it's something simple that we can look at, and these people would like to be heard about it.
All right, let me direct the staff to, to study that and let's put it on. We would like to have the, at least the account numbers or something, so we can look into those accounts.
Sure.
Would you give the account numbers or the names, so they can look at the name?
Sure, where, but I will, I will get that to them.
Okay.
Um, the next is to discuss the issue of EDS, extra duty officers. The, the requirement by the city, I'd like to see both the policy that's written in regards to this, for this requirement. As far as I know, it wasn't passed by the council, but maybe it was. Um, I, I, I don't recall that. Um, I think that when, um, places like, um, the, the people that I've spoken with in the past, uh, Beer Co., Maple Street Tavern, um, Forgotten Rodeos, these places have all, um, put on events in downtown. The majority of the time, they are trying to raise money for nonprofits. Uh, I think Hi-Fi Records as well has tried, I, I think, um, I, I want to say that even Barcade has tried to do that as well. But specifically Maple Street Tavern, uh, went over there, um, because I own a, a building near there and, uh, was checking on something, and, uh, there were two officers that were required to be there. And literally out in the parking lot, there was just, um, you know, people with their cra, arts and crafts and everything. And all of the alcohol for that particular event was within their area. So I'd like, I, I, you know, they're trying to raise mon, I think it was for cancer awareness. I, I, I'd like to, I'd like to, for them not to have to waste money on things that, um, that, that money could have better gone to a nonprofit, and I just don't want us to be in a situation where, um, you know, people can't afford to do these little events. Um, it's cost prohibitive. And, uh, I want them to be able to do those things, and I think that if there's a problem, then I think, at the, at least I think, the way cities has addressed it in the past is to, um, is to then address it with those individual businesses, but of course, I'll defer to the chief and, and his officers on that. But I think there's a better solution for this EDS, and I just don't want it to be a reason why somebody doesn't do an event to raise money for a nonprofit.
Let me ask the staff to put that on the march agenda, the discussion of the EDS policy, and I would give the chief plenty of time to look at it and study it up. And what else you got?
Um, the, the, um, one of the, I have two things left. The, the issue of the voting on items at the meeting. Discuss the minimum notice to the public and the voting on the issues of the agenda. One of the things that the newspapers have brought up, um, over and over is people feeling like they didn't get enough notification. So is there a place that we can, um, um, maybe better publicize the notice or extend the notice period? Or, um, I, I think we have to be better at that. That, I think, you know, there's been too many projects that have come up, and people have complained so much that they didn't have enough notice. I was speaking with Frankie about an issue, um, for this council meeting, and we talked about a ju, a, you know, addressing it at the agenda meeting, which was just last night. And so like last night, you added something to the agenda meeting, and it wasn't controversial, of course, but I think people would have a problem being able to add something to the agenda, the public not being notified, and the very next night we vote on it. So I just, I think that's something that we can all work out, but I'd like to have something in writing about that, that we're not going to agree to put something on the night before a meeting and then vote on it the next day. I think it's, it's, it's very important to involve the public, and I think it's very important that they have adequate time to make arrangements to. and I think it's very important that they have adequate time to make arrangements to come.
There's no word, we need to put that, there's not a vote on that. We need to go by the state and the federal government's regulations. And that's what we have done. Yes, Tom?
Mr. Mayor, here's my question. Is the premise to her question, is it the council's intention to continue these agenda meetings on the Monday night before the council meeting?
Oh, continue them as long as the new council people ask for it.
All right. My understanding was it was a transition, and I guess you've had one or two. I would urge you not to continue that. I've urged that in past years, as you know. It seems to me the council needs to have a full and frank discussion here on the, on the night when everyone, the public is invited and is here. I realize the other meetings are also open, but I dare say few, if any, come.
I already knew your, your promise.
You knew all the time.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So we'll look at the state and the federal statutes and let's make sure we're within those. Do our most diligence that we can use to make sure everybody knows what we're doing.
I'd like to make a motion that we go into closed session in, in accordance with General Statutes 143-318 Point 11A Number 7 regarding investigations.
Go to the lawyers on procedure. Is this a valid thing we can do without any kind of advertisement?
Yes.
Does it take a vote of the council?
Yeah, require a vote of council on closed session.
But I need a, a motion in a second?
Can we get any more information about the nature of the closed session?
Give me time.
Yes.
Okay. Do I need to have a motion in a second or is the?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a motion.
Um, do, how much do I need to know about the nature of the investigation or what it?
Mayor, I think, I think in light of what it is, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure myself. I think really, it's an investigation, you know, you really won't know what can be said until you hear, you know, what it's about. At, at this point, I, I don't think it'd be appropriate. And I don't even know what, I, I don't know what it is. I don't think it'd be appropriate, you know, to make any comment. And maybe later, but.
If I asked all the questions I need to ask, is there anything else I need to ask before I ask for a second?
No, sir.
I have a question.
Of me?
I just have a question. Why can't we discuss it right here without going into closed session?
It's discussing with an attorney, an investigation.
Mr. Mayor, it's not been the city's policy to do this.
I'm sorry.
Can we have an open discussion now? Why do we have to go into closed session?
I, it's not up to me.
I mean, I'm, I'm just, I'm just asking. I mean, can we have a discussion right here?
I would certainly, I would certainly recommend that you hear it in closed session and you come back and you have whatever open session you want. I, I'm not, I'm not familiar with the particulars of this. I, I think, I, I would certainly recommend that you hear it in closed sessions and if you want to have an open discussion after that, you could. But I don't want to foreclose, you know? I mean, you, you can talk, this council can talk about whatever you want to. But I'm just saying, in light of the way it's been presented, I think that'd probably be a better protocol to do that way.
We've never done anything like this before. Had a council member asked to do this. We've always advertised that we're going to go into closed session. Are we breaking fresh ground here or something that somebody else has done before? Or is this normal for us to do something like this?
I, I, I think it's certainly, you know, a council member can ask to go into, you know, go into closed session. And I don't know that it necessarily has to be advertised that you're going to go into closed session. Certainly it's always, you know, it would, it, it'd be nothing wrong with that, you know, to do that. And, and if you wanted to do that, you wanted to advertise at the next meeting, if you're going to close session, if you are going to go into closed session, you certainly do that as well.
Anybody got any questions for attorneys? Other than Tom Boney? Come up, Tom.
Mr. Mayor, I, I certainly have great concerns, but I would also have to say that it's certainly ironic in light of the very preceding comment that Councilmember Tally made about not having things sprung on the public, and then she springs one. And, and so I, I, I have concerns about consistency, but my greater concern is the nature, and I have no idea what it is. I would certainly encourage the attorneys to watch carefully the discussion to be sure that it is, in fact, one of the categories. It's not any old kind of investigation. It's supposed to be an investigation. I mean, I don't know if the police are even here, much less to participate in it. It, it's not, yeah, where's my law? But in other words, it's supposed to be something that is hearing an investigation from law enforcement. You, you referred to it, the council member referred to it as being something with the attorneys. That's a different provision of law.
May I, may I respond? I asked for several things to be on the agenda. I was barred from putting anything but one item on the agenda. I couldn't put anything else on the agenda for, I was told, time restrictions. So when I spoke with the city attorney and at the direction of attorney, they said to wait until the end of the meeting and request this pursuant to that general statute. So on the, on the advice of legal counsel, I did it the way I didn't like it either. That's why I said, let's, let's do a rule. But when I'm at, when I asked to put things on the agenda and I can't do that, what, what other choice do I have?
Wouldn't give any more information? If I'm not mistaken, I finally found my agenda that's kind of ta, I mean, my public records, open meetings law, it's kind of tattered. But the, this is to plan, conduct, or hear reports concerning investigations of alleged criminal misconduct. Does the issue rise to the level of alleged criminal misconduct?
I don't know. We'll have to discuss that, and we want to discuss it with the attorney.
I, I don't know.
Now I'm going to speculate, because now I think I know where this might be coming from. Does this have to do with any former member of the council?
Do I have to answer that?
I, I certainly, again, I would recommend that, you know, like I said, I'm, that you go into closed session discussion, then you come out and you say whatever you want to. You, you may find that there will not be an investigation. Now, this is to talk about whether it is or not, and you may or may not want to invite police. I mean, it's entirely up to you. It's your, your motion.
Well, now I'm speculating, but based on now the context, I would raise deep concerns if it has to do with a council member current or past. The statute is in fact very clear that you may not go into closed session to discuss another council member currently on the board. And I think a logical application of that, although I grant it's an application, is that it should not be done for past members either, if by any chance that were the case. And I, I know there's been some debate. In fact, some of it, I'm sort of invited by the, at least one council member to, to look into his situation. But I, I am not aware that it's anything in a criminal nature. And I think if it, even if it does, and it's regarding a public official who's been an elected member of this council, it should be discussed in public. And I would caution that.
Mr. Boney is, is correct in one part, and another part, maybe, maybe not. Okay, and one part is that, you know, the open meetings law, it's, it's pretty clear if you're discussing the performance, you know, of a council member, in either a current or former council member, that's, that's true. But the nature of what's going to be discussed, I don't know. And like I said, I don't know. I'm, I'm at a disadvantage. I don't know, I don't, I can't say it's performance or not performance. And again, I think you'd have to go. But I, I can, I can assure you, if it's about performance, our recommendation as attorneys would be to go into open session. And if it's related to what would be considered an investigation as allowed under Sub 7, you know, then we'll just see how, you know, how it plays from there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, with that assurance. Thank you.
Okay, let me have, before we make a second, let me have who would need to go into this closed session.
Ask one quick session for a question before we do that?
Yes.
Our attorneys, do you recommend that we go into closed session?
I.
Yeah. He just said that.
Let me ask it this way.
I want another answer.
Well, and I, I, I think you'll know more after you go into closed, closed session to hear it. You know, then if you, for some reason, you don't want to continue, you can motion to go out of closed session, you come back down here. I, I think, I think you, if you're in a position where you have to honor the request of a fellow councilperson, you know, and because, you know, we're all here, we don't know what can be said, okay? So I think you're in a position that if a council member asks for that, you consider it, if you agree to it, you second it, you move, you go do it, you get in there and, you know, then you go from there. But, but again, I, I want, you know, so it'd be perfect and clear to get in, we get in anything out of bounds with respect to open meetings law, it's going to be our position to recommend to come back in open session.
Okay, thank you.
Who should we have in this session?
You know, I, I would, I would think obviously attorneys, the manager, and some police chief or representatives from police department.
H, yeah, okay.
Since I made the motion, I prefer to just have the attorneys at first, and then if we need these other people, then we could call these other people too.
Call them all at one time. They'll all hear everything. Made a motion to go into closed session.
But we, again, was on the council for six years. We had plenty of meetings in closed sessions with just the attorneys.
Never had a council member ask for closed session. I ever remember.
Yeah, I, I did want to underscore that, Mr. Mayor. I, I do not remember any motion for a closed session for any purpose, not just this one, that has been just added by a council member at the, at the meeting. And I, I would certainly caution that. I think it is a very bad precedent. Always they've been noticed so that people at least can have a raised eyebrow, hmm, I wonder what that's about? I think I'll go in here, and instead say.
Well, hopefully we'll be able to do that next month. But I did try to put things on the agenda and was told I could pick one thing.
This was never mentioned. You surprised all of them.
You, you said I could pick one thing.
Well, you put three on there. You talked about three. But anyway, let's go back with this motion here. Jennifer made a motion to go into closed session under 143-318-11A-7. And I will second it because I want to hear what she says. So got a motion in a second? All in favor, say aye. All opposed likewise?
Aye.
We will go in closed session, vote was four to one. We'll go in closed session at 20 minutes till nine. I mean, yeah, 20 minutes till nine, so you got 10 minutes before we go in. And we will bring in Frankie, Brian, Bob, and Jeff. I wanted to go into closed session at 20 minutes till nine. We want everybody just to be able to go. It's, it's 8:30 right now. Yeah. My fault.
Hey, Doug.
Hey, Doc.
And we, yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, we've met in closed session. I need a motion. Do we make a motion to get come back or just come back? Okay, I make a motion. We come out of closed session and back in the regular session. Thank you, ma'am. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose likewise. Ladies and gentlemen, we will turn over to Chief Pritchard, a criminal investigation under State Statute 14-234. And that will go to the chief and we will come back with a resolution of this one way or another after the chief does his, his, uh... All right, I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Need a second.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your patience. Yes.